And there will be open requests made on this great floor. Trust me. Yeah. The way he's talking.
We call the Bryan County Board of Commissioners for April the 13th to order, please. We stand and we'll do the invocation of Pledge Allegiance.
Your value, please. Terrence, I thank you for this day, Lord. Thanks for all the many blessings, Lord, and bless this body here that we do the right thing for the county in your eyes, Lord, and we do what's right here with the county, Lord, and just want to bless our firefighters and EMTs and our soldiers overseas, Lord, and bring them home safe in Jesus's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Make me seated.
Thank everybody for coming today. We go through a couple of items real quick with approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, could I add, executive session, statement on state.
Okay, and I'm going to move the proclamation up to right below, after the consent agenda too. So need a, got a motion on that? Need a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we need the approval of the March 2021 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion and we approve the March 2021 meeting minutes.
On second.
Take it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we need the approval for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda submitted.
The second one, man?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda, and then we're going to do a proclamation. It is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And Joe is here from Sheriff's Farm. Thanks for being at the 911 Center. And I'll come down and brief this real quick to her and we'll sign it. Go by, y'all take them, take them some and all. This National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time, a very large police fire emergency service is in. Whereas when an emergency occurs, prompt response, police officers, firefighters, care management is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens. You telephone to Bryan County Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact for our citizens having emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Bryan County 911 Communication Center have contributed to the extension of criminal suppression of fires, improvement of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has to do the capacity, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job as a passenger. Therefore, it is resolved that the commission of Bryan County declares that we go April the 11th through 17th, 2021, the National Public Safety Telecommunicators of Bryan County. Our men and women who are diligent and professional in keeping our communities, and so thank you that we did rule, we signed this agreement. Thank y'all for what you do. I had, it was a call I heard that somebody called up and ordered a pizza, and they were getting assaulted, and that's what they did, so that was good. Chair, Dave, you want extra pepper on which you put this today? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is, can I change? The Development Authority.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with y'all today. I wanted to brief y'all on some highlights from the Development Authority of Bryan County from 2020. So first of all, project activity. As we all know, last year was certainly a different type of year with COVID happening in March, and we didn't really know what to expect from a project activity standpoint with industrial development and recruitment. But I'm happy to report that we had 31 projects in 2020, and 26 of those inquiries were new. So had a very strong year in terms of our pipeline. So a couple of announcements that I wanted to highlight, first being Medline. They are a medical supply manufacturer and distribution company based out of Northfield, Illinois, and they have decided to invest in a 1.2 million square foot distribution center in the Belfast Commerce Park. This facility will generate about $70 million of investment between the land, the building, machinery, and equipment. In addition to them opening this facility, they will also co-locate temporarily with FedEx Ground. So FedEx will initially occupy about 415,000 square feet of the 1.2 million square foot facility. FedEx will probably employ, as they say, hundreds of people in the short-term lease that they have. But specifically to Medline, they will employ, they've committed to employ 150 people by 2025, and they ultimately, once they're fully in the building and they're fully operational in the whole space, once FedEx is no longer there, they'll probably be up to as many as 600 employees. So they'll start with about 150 by 2025, and then eventually grow into about 600 total employees. CZM opened a new assembly center in the Interstate Center Industrial Park up on the north end of the county in the Ellevell Black Creek area last year in April. They previously were headquartered in Brazil, but they have moved their world headquarters from Brazil to this new facility in Bryan County. It's an assembly center, and they also have relocated their engineering operations to this location. They now are in two facilities in Bryan County. They have their service and rental fleet in the Dixie Harn Industrial Park in Pembroke, and then they have this assembly center in the Interstate Center. So between the two locations, they plan to eventually employ about 75 people. On the real estate front, wanted to talk about a couple of developments that occurred last year. We did sell property, the Development Authority sold property to CRG. They're a private developer based out of St. Louis, Missouri. They acquired just over 55 acres in Interstate Center Two, and they have constructed this 700,000 square foot cross-dock speculative building. They are actively marketing this. We are also helping them market this building. They do have prospects that are interested in potentially locating in this facility. And also, I did want to note, it didn't happen last year, but last week, we did close on some additional property with CRG, two different parcels. The Belfast Commerce Park in Richmond Hill, this is where Medline is constructing their 1.2 million square foot facility. The Development Authority acquired 200 acres of the CSX Select Site, so it's this property right here. It's adjacent to rail, the Riceboro Southern Short Line, which connects directly to CSX in Savannah. You have the new interchange here, and then Caesar Stone is located adjacent to the Select Site. So we were very excited that we were able to work out a deal with Radiant to acquire this property. The intent of this property is to hold it specifically for manufacturing and assembly projects only. We know there's a lot of interest in the market for distribution and warehouse space, and we think that's great, but we felt like it was important for the Development Authority to own property on rail that we could hold for manufacturing and assembly. The Pembroke Industrial Site, this is property that the city of Pembroke does own, about 15 acres, adjacent to the Dixie Harn Industrial Park. It is adjacent to the Georgia Central Railline and Highway 280. We've marketed this for the city of Pembroke for several years, and we were able to send them a lead last year that has resulted in a sale. So they've now sold this property, and from what we understand, a concrete operation will locate here. Infrastructure and due diligence. Back at Interstate Center Two, you can see this is a wetland crossing, and this is a proposed road that will go back to property that will ultimately be developed by CRG. But the county worked with the Development Authority last year to put in this crossing, and this opens up about 200 acres. Also related to due diligence, this is a sketch actually from our application to the Army Corps of Engineers for a wetlands permit. We would like to potentially impact some wetlands in Interstate Center Phase Three. This is property the Development Authority owns, and we primarily are marketing this for manufacturing and assembly on the north end. And in addition to applying for a wetlands permit, which we're waiting to hear back from the Corps on, we also commissioned a flood study to develop elevations, base flood elevations and things of that nature. And we worked with Van Trust on that because that flood study was mutually beneficial to both Van Trust and to the Development Authority. So some other updates. I mentioned COVID earlier. Again, COVID certainly had a pretty big impact on our industries last year, so we worked constantly to communicate with them about shelter in place orders and essential workers and things of that nature. We developed a section on our website to share that type of information with them. We also partnered with some of the neighboring counties in Bryan, Bullock, Effingham, Chatham, Scraven. We all came together, and we put together a regional job board. So while a lot of people were being displaced from COVID, people were laying off, that type of thing, there were some of our industries in the region that were hiring, and so we wanted to have a central location where we could encourage people to go to find industrial job opportunities. And then finally, we worked with the Chamber and the United Way, we participated in their calls that they had with community leadership to keep up to date in what was going on. Some community events that we were involved in, a couple of virtual events, and then a couple in person. The Grits in Government was an event that we had traditionally done in person in advance of the legislative session toward the end of the year. But last year, because of COVID, we went virtual, and so we had a series of events over several weeks. We participated in the State of the Community as well as the Legislative Dinner in person. The State of the Community was an event where the Development Authority, along with both cities, the county, the school board, the CBB, the DOT, we came and shared updates with the community leadership and the business community. And then the Legislative Dinner was an opportunity for us to take a group up to Atlanta, and I know some of y'all were able to join us for that to thank our legislators. And then finally, Leadership Bryan, that was an in-person event that occurred with the Leadership Bryan class last year. Other events and updates, we did organize a joint work session between the County Commission and the Development Authority, and we talked about the Kia Project that happened in West Point. Also, I presented to y'all back in August, I believe, when you had your off-site strategic planning session. We've been working with the Georgia Ports Authority on a regional labor study, RFP, and also I participated in the State of the Port virtually this year. We sponsored the GDA Board Retreat Dinner through our Joint Development Authority with Bullock, Effingham, and Chatham Counties, and we hosted some virtual events. When COVID first started, we wanted to make sure we stayed top of mind with our partners in Atlanta that bring us projects as well as site selection consultants. So we hosted several different trivia opportunities to engage our partners, and I think that was a good way to stay top of mind with them. I did participate in the Site Selectors Guild Conference, which happened right before the onset of COVID. And then finally, we hired an intern last year that helped us with some updates for the Georgia Ready for Accelerated Development Program with Interstate Center in Belfast. So I wanted to end on this slide, just to remind y'all of kind of the value that the Development Authority brings to the county, and I think that it's important for the commission to understand, because y'all are a big part of what's on this slide, that since 2015, the Development Authority of Bryan County has announced 14 industrial projects representing over $200 million of private capital investment and over 1,000 total new jobs. So I just want to thank y'all for your continued support of the Development Authority, and thank y'all for the opportunity to come and speak today.
Anybody have a motion? Nope. Thank you, and I appreciate all the work you did. County has definitely grown. Okay, next up, we need a motion to close this meeting and open our public hearing.
Make a motion to close this meeting.
Excuse me, Chairman. The items that we have on the agenda this evening are non-public hearing items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They don't need to open the public hearing.
Sorry about that. It's first reading, that's right.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So this item that we have on your agenda, this is for the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of Bryan County. And just, you know, to kind of reiterate this process that we're doing under the Unified Development Ordinance, anytime we change the official zoning map, it is actually done by ordinance, and so therefore, just like any other ordinance, we do it with a first and second reading. So this item, being on your agenda for just the first reading, is not a public hearing, but it is an opportunity to go ahead and present the ordinance that will be coming forward to you for this amendment to the zoning map, and will, you kind of put everybody on notice on what's going to be coming up next. So with this first ordinance item that we have, this is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map. This is for an application that's being presented by Drayton Parker's LLC. It's being represented by Buckle Design Group, and they are requesting to rezone property located at 10820 East Highway 280 and rezone it from the existing interchange commercial zoning district to the I-2 general industrial zoning district. We do have their conceptual plan to go ahead and give you an idea about what they're going to be proposing for development under this request for rezoning. They are showing a approximately 128,000 square foot warehouse that will be situated on that portion of the lot that's proposed for the I-2 zoning district. And just to give you a general reference as to where this property is located, it is in that southwest quadrant of Highway 280 and I-16. So this item, we have scheduled for public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission for April 20th, and then this item will be presented back to the Board of Commissioners for the second reading and public hearing at your meeting on May 11th. So if there are no questions at this time, I'll move on to the second item that we have.
May I have any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this item is the first reading of an ordinance amendment to amend the official zoning map. This one is for property located at 209 Bill Fitch Road. The property is currently Zoned B1, which is a neighborhood commercial zoning district, and the applicant is proposing to rezone it to the B2 general commercial zoning district. The site plans for this include an approximately 6,000 square foot commercial building with four service space. Initially, the project was proposed for a hobby shop. However, we now know that the applicant intends to operate an automotive paint and body shop, and so they're requesting the rezoning in order to accommodate that request. This item will also be scheduled for our Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing on April 20th, and then it will be back to you on May 11th for the second reading of this ordinance and a public hearing.
And we just rezone, Ms. Watt?
This rezoning to B1 was originally done in June of 2019.
So, okay, is that what it was?
Yep. So it's been not quite two years.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions?
There's a pretty large area that's undeveloped property as part of this. Looks like this is all kind of tough, run over to one side.
Yeah, so the total acreage of this site is about 3.2 acres, but yes, the development does sit kind of on that northern portion. There are some pretty considerate wetlands as well as special flood hazard areas on the southern portion of this property.
A retention pond takes up a lot of that, let you see there.
That's right. As part of their stormwater management system, they would be putting in that detention pond as well.
Any other questions? Okay.
Good evening. The next item on the agenda is something that I do need a vote, a motion and a vote on, but it is a non-public hearing item as well. This is a traffic contribution agreement between the county and the owners of the commercial development that is going to be known as Interstate Exchange. The property had a subdivision plat approved in January by this board. It is a commercial subdivision. As part of that subdivision process, we require a traffic impact analysis. The traffic impact analysis showed that it would impact that intersection at 280 and Interstate Boulevard, Oracle Parkway. So as part of that, we require a mitigation agreement, which is what we're calling the traffic contribution agreement, and so this is the formal document that memorializes the terms and conditions of what the owners of the property, North Bryan Properties LLC, will have to contribute, which is $82,500, which goes to the cost of the traffic light.
That's what it, it was $82,500 for the cost?
Yes. That is their portion for the traffic light, yes. So with that, if you have any questions, I am here to answer them. If not, I do need a formal motion and a vote to approve the resolution.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a traffic contribution agreement. Back up.
Oops, sorry.
Buy between Bryan County and North Bryan Properties LLC.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Ben, you're up next.
Sir. First on the agenda is a Planning and Zoning Commission appointment. Michelle Veran was appointed to Plan and Zoning Commission on January 14, 2020, to fulfill, or to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Steve Scholar. This term began May 9th, 2017, will expire May 8th, 2021. Michelle Veran has expressed an interest in continuing to serve in her position. The commission wishes to reappoint her. This reappointment will be for a four-year term ending in May of 2025.
Do you have any motion to appoint her?
Chairman, I make a motion that we reappoint Michelle Veran to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Take a minute.
Second item is FY 2020 year-end budget amendments attached to 2020 budget amendments are necessary to close out financials of 2020. Counties required to make year-end budget amendments to approve the additional expenditures. This is standard procedure completed prior to the closing of each year-end. Just to go through these very, very quickly, hit the high points. Countywide Services Fund, about $1.7 million. The large majority of that, 1.2, is bond money for energy efficiency bond, the final payment there, or final use of those bond proceeds. Next is grant funds in the Unincorporated Fund, which was a firefighter assistant grants. We got to account for the revenue expenditures for that. And then special funds, 5.7 billion, which the large majority of that facility is already bought, which was taken out throughout the year, the revenue and the proceeds spent there. And the final, the minor funds, jail fund, which is $100,000 worth of renovations from the jail fund done by the sheriff. So there's the amendments there, and see, there the resolution adopted now.
Do we need a motion to approve that budget amendment?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2020 budget amendments as reflected in Exhibit A as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Ben. Next one. Steve, budget amendment, another budget amendment.
Item three is a budget amendment for FY 2021. Since taking office of January 1st, 2021, Sheriff President found some additional staffing needs to ensure the Sheriff's Department can operate efficiently. He's requested six new positions, two leave of courthouse security, four, which would be deputy positions, with two of which would be for the traffic units. This request totals 280, just over $280,000, and will be funded from the bank balance of FY 2021.
Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the 2021 budget amendment that's reflected in Exhibit A as presented.
Second. Any discussion on that? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, next is the appointment to the Coastal Workforce Development Board.
Item four is appointment to the Coastal Workforce Development Board. In recent years, a Development Authority member has, staff person has served as economic development representative for Bryan County. Currently, the Development Authority of Bryan County is not able to allocate staff for this position. However, the Richmond Hill Bryan County Chamber of Commerce CEO, Ms. Catherine Johnson, has expressed interest to serve on this board. This position is set to expire June 30th, 2023. Like you to consider the appointment to the Coastal Workforce Development Board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Catherine Johnson to the Coastal Workforce Development Board.
Thank you. Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that carries. Six is the bond resolution consideration.
Item five is appointment to the Middle Coastal Unified Development Board. Anna Shapen, CEO of the Development Authority of Bryan County, currently serves as one of the board members representing Bryan County on this board. Most counties in this, on this board are represented by a local act, an act of developer. Anna Shapen is interested in being reappointed to this board for a four-year term ending June 30th, 2025, which to do so, the attached resolution to adopt if does that.
Need a motion for that?
Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Hannah Shapen to the Middle Coastal Unified Development Board. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now the bond resolution consideration.
Item six is the Board of Education Bond Resolution Consideration. Earlier this month, the Board of Education authorized issuance of 18, almost $18.9 million of its general obligation bonds to be issued and delivered on April 15, 2021. As you remember, this bond series, this is the second series of bonds issued by the school district as part of a $100 million bond authorization that the voters of Bryan County approved in March of 2017. Resolution was adopted earlier this month by the Board of Education requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize the issuance of an applicable tax, if called upon, to do so to help pay debt service on the bonds. Of course, that's on the school portion of the mileage rate there. And then school district plans on first using proceeds of the East Bloss to pay all debt service, and only use that portion of the tax if they need it, if it's insufficient. Leave, I guess what they need to do is adopt the attached resolution authorizing that since they're a taxing authority basically for the school board.
Do you have any questions? Anybody have any questions? Make a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the attached bond resolution for the Board of Education.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay. Next is the food service program for summer.
Item seven is the appointment, if you wish to do so, of Ms. Wendy Futch, formerly Ms. Wendy Sims, Bryan County Family Connection Executive Director to administer the Bryan County Summer Food Service Program for this coming fiscal year. Do you remember, this is something we do every year, because she's the one that basically runs the program, and this is a requirement of the grant that they get to fund it. Last year, they served 33,000 meals at three sites. Due to COVID, they get a little extra money to do so, and this year, return back to normal operation, if I'm not mistaken. So the attached recommendations to appoint Ms. Wendy Futch. So the attached recommendations to appoint Ms. Wendy Futch, Family Connection Executive Director to administer the Bryan County Summer Food Program for this fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Hey, Wendy, do y'all think y'all will serve that many people over this, this, this next time, too?
Um, we have to, yeah. That was actually serving breakfast and lunch. So we serve it quite a day from March to August.
Okay. Yeah, some of the new board members all know, I mean, that's a, that's a great program for the county to make sure kids have food in the summer.
And that number is a little bit larger because we serve at home every time. So normally, we only serve during the summer months when the cold is out. But because of COVID, we, well, because of entrance or good saving as a summer lunch, by, they offer those opportunities are provided in March, so everybody can provide it for a lot of year.
And, and will this, this will do, will this do some weekend meals, too?
It, it doesn't provide weekend meals, but we have a partnership with Non-Aid and New Games Church in Richmond Hill, and we provide food bags, and they take this home on Friday, and they kind of get some during the weekend until the end of the month.
It's a lot of meals, Bryan County. It's a good program. Okay, we need a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Ms. Wendy Futch to administer Bryan County Summer Food Service Programs for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We did the proclamation earlier. We'll do public comments. If anybody has any public comments, we're gonna go into executive session, and don't want you sitting around waiting to come out of executive session. Does anybody have any public comments they wanna make? No? Okay, we'll take the motion to go into executive session, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go into executive session to discuss real estate. Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It'll be an executive session discussing some real estate.
Discussing.